Ready?
Yes.
And join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, everybody. Tonight is Monday, June 24th, 2019. It is the regularly scheduled town council meeting. Before we formally begin, actually, we do roll call first. All members of council but Mr. Rooney are present, as is our first selectman. I have a number of amendments, proposed amendments to the agenda. So may I have a motion to amend the agenda to include the following. Under Article Three, C, we're adding Parks and Recreation Department, colon, approximately 300 plants. And there's a memo that's on here, on the dais in front of each of you. We're also adding P, which is the memo from the first selectman to the town council chairman dated today regarding a donation to the Parks and Recreation Department. And the final amendment would be to six appointments, Mr. Brown is as an alternate. So after Board of Ethics, he will read as an alternate, if all the other information is correct. So may I have that motion to amend the agenda, those three items?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero, thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar as amended, are there any comments or objections to the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll pass the consent calendar. We now have on the amended agenda Communications A through P. I'd ask that those be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting. Madam Clark? Onto public participation, are there any members of the public who wish to participate in public participation at this time? Seeing none, I will close our first public participation session. We have one appointed this evening, that is Jonathan Brown of Forty Oakwood Drive to the Board of Ethics as an alternate. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask this council to approve the appointment of Jonathan Brown, Forty Oakwood Drive to the Board of Ethics as an alternate.
Motion by Ms. Martin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer, discussion, Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Jonathan's a certified surgical technologist at Leal New Haven Hospital. He's also the vice president of the Association of Surgical Technologists for the state of Connecticut. He's been a volunteer with the Monroe Fire Department since 1996, serving as captain from 2016 to 2018. He's also a former member of Monroe EMS, serving from 2003 to 2009. And I believe currently serving now. Jonathan is excited about this opportunity to continue to give back in public service to the town of Monroe. And this appointment fills the seat previously held by Carrie Landley.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, any further discussion?
Just that it just did go through all.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. So the condition precedent for this appointment was satisfied?
That is correct.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And again, that motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to our action items, the first item is the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. Mr. Rooney is not present, are any other members of that committee who wish to report on anything?
We have not met since our last meeting. I do want to bring up that I, and I may be incorrect, but I believe we are still a member short on this subcommittee. As I don't believe we've ever appointed somebody to fill the slot from Mr. Con-
Councilman Mauer, I was appointed-
For FAPs as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Never mind then.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Formicella. Moving on to B is Planning, Zoning, Public Works and Park and Recreation, that's Ms. Lepalas.
Yeah. The planning zoning meeting had really nothing pertaining to town information, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. C is L and A, Mr. Reed?
We have met tonight, Mr. Chairman, we had met tonight. And most of what we discussed, we're going to be going through on this agenda tonight. And everything had reached consensus to come to council. However, I do want to make note, one special note is that we got pretty far with rules of procedure. And what I fully expect after a couple of refinements and edits, I will circulate the proposed rules of procedure 2019 by this Friday. So probably sometime Friday, but by this Friday.
Great.
And then please take a look at it, it'll be emailed to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Strategic planning, I know working with the selectmen on a date for that with this summer schedule has been a little bit difficult, but we anticipate having a meeting with that committee shortly. EMS, again, Mr. Rooney's not present, I don't know if there's any other update?
I know they have not met since the last meeting. However, I've been in touch with Chairman Rooney just in regards to the draft contract for the construction manager and seeking their committee's input on that before we spark the council.
Thank you very much. And the first selectman's update, Mr. Collett?
Forgot to slide these down here, sorry. So we're making our way down, just a few updates tonight. One is the Route 25 Bridge Projects. As I think everyone knows, the final weekend tour was completed this past weekend to raise the roadway and pave it. The business driveways are actually, they're going to be paved this evening. In about a month from now, I'm told that the DRC is going to do another final coat of paving that will be done at night. And there is some finishing work over the summer to be completed, guardrails, temporary piping needs to be removed and some, you know, various cleanup activities. The project is expected to be ninety-five plus percent, if not 100% complete by Labor Day. The second item was just to give you an update on the state partnership plan. And one of the legislative items that came out of this last General Assembly session was implementation of regional pricing for insurance premiums for our medical plan. It does not take effect until fiscal year '21, so we're talking about not the budget that's about to start in July, but the year from then. And we currently, at this point, there is really no clear information, it's very vague language. We don't have a whole lot to go on in terms of predictability. So I have met with our insurance consultants and have directed them that I want a complete, we want to make sure we have a complete market analysis in anticipation of the next budget season so we can fully understand our options going forward. Hopefully, hopefully we can, that the state plan will remain affordable, but at this point, we really don't have a whole lot else to go on. So we just want to make sure that we're aware of what else is available in the marketplace should we decide that it's no longer affordable or competitive. The last but not least is the town clerk. Couple of folks in our town clerk's office, the town clerk, Beeta Stone, and assistant town clerk, Barbara G. They have both become certified Connecticut town clerks. It is a long process, it takes at least three years, lots of training, requires a certain amount of on-the-job experience prior to sitting for the challenging state exam. And it's a great achievement, I just want to make my congratulations known to this council and publicly to both Beeta and Barbara. And that is all.
Mr. Collett, just one question, the state partnership plan, is it anticipated based upon us being situated, increase our premiums?
Yes, so my feeling, and I've certainly discussed this with our consultants as well, and I believe that my sense is correct, is that the entire reason for this language being inserted in there is because the cost of the plan have gone up with more Fairfield County municipalities and boards of education joining the plan.
Right.
And so my expectation is that, yes, Fairfield County communities would see higher premiums as a result. So that this would cause, you know, an increase in our rates higher than other regions. But again, what that number is, what the delta is, no one can really know for sure.
That's fairly been consistent with the new administration and Hartford shifting more costs down our way, so I anticipated that would be.
So, we really don't know. I mean, they may establish a regional premium over the premium. That still may be cost-effective relative to the market, you know, without the state plan, but I think we need to have that information for the next budget season.
Mr. Mauer?
Mr. Chairman, if I may backtrack us a little bit, I remembered there was one thing I wanted to bring up on the minutes.
Sure.
Namely, that it has council member Jason Aguilar instead of Jason Mauer and the present attendees. So every may amend accordingly.
Got that comment correct, all right. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our new business, there being no unfinished business. And the first matter of new business is the resolution regarding the DEEP grant agreement for the Houstonic Valley River Trail. Ms. Lepalas?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution regarding the Houstonic River Valley Trail agreements, Sections Two and Three, and move for their adoption. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the Houstonic River Valley Trail Agreement and any associated documents by and between state of Connecticut, Department of Energy, and Environmental Protection for the design and construction of the Houstonic River Valley Trail Sections Two and Three. And be it further resolved that the policies of the town of Monroe comply with nondiscrimination agreements and warranties of Connecticut general statutes 4A-60 and 4A-68 as amended.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin, for discussion as we took the deal, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Collett.
Just one thing, so this had gone through L and A. Just a reminder for us on council, all right. Mr. Schatzlein has had given a presentation on this prior. This is not to be confused with the Pepper Street one, and there's a few other ones, but there was a detailed presentation on this. This is finally coming to fruition, and it has been budgeted. But I do, I just wanted to remind us of that because Mr. Schatzlein is prepared to give a presentation, but probably didn't feel it was worth it unless we want, but he is here and has kindly offered that.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Collett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as council member Reed mentioned, you are probably familiar with this project. This was one that started several years ago, back in 2016. The town was awarded a LOTSIP grant for the trail project. This is a section of the trail that goes from Maple Drive to Wolf Park. We've been talking about it recently in the budget process. As you'll recall, that we have a significant grant, about a million and a half dollars emitted under LOTSIP for the construction of the trail. That grant does not cover design costs, which were well north of $200,000. As a result, we sought out additional funding sources and through our collaboration with MetroCOT, identified this grant, which is before you tonight, from DEEP, which will cover eighty percent of the, eighty percent, basically eighty percent of the twenty percent of the design cost. So that leaves us with a $55,000 commitment for the entire project, so getting about a million and a half dollar return on that $55,000. As I mentioned in L and A as well, you'll notice within the agreement, we can count in-kind town services as well. It doesn't have to be strictly cash, so looking at the time of staff can also be applied towards that to further reduce the actual capital outlay. The actual $55,000 in its entirety is included in our capital budget. That was recently part of the approved budget process. So again, what's before you now is to have this grant approved so we can move forward and complete the design at a substantially lower cost to move the project forward. Again, Mr. Schatzlein's here, if you want any further information on the greater project or this grant, specifically, he's obviously deeply involved in both efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Collett, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And against, motion carries eight to zero. Item B is the resolution regarding SNE Building Systems Maintenance Services Agreement for the Police Department. Ms. Lepalas?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution regarding SNE Building System Maintenance Service Agreements for the Police Department and move for its adoption. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the maintenance service agreements and any associated documents by and between SNE Building Systems for the Police Department.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicella, for discussion, Mr. Collett?
Thank you, so this is the same agreement you saw a year ago. This is the proprietary building maintenance systems that are in the life, well, we're talking about the Police Department. Currently, similar system is in the library. Again, proprietary system that we pay this maintenance and monitoring agreement for. The agreement is for the fiscal year starting July 1st. And this is the same annual fee as we are currently, so there's no increase in cost in the current year.
Any further discussion? Mr. Collett, was, were multi-year, a multi-year term ever considered?
They have not previously offered that. We can certainly obtain that in the future, but that was not offered.
Anybody else? All right, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And against, motion carries eight to zero. We have the same services agreement with respect to the library, Ms. Lepalas?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution regarding SNE Building Systems Maintenance Service Agreement for the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library and move for its adoption. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the maintenance service agreements and any associated documents by and between SNE Building Systems for the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicella, same go around here, I don't think we need a discussion, but the floor is open, anybody? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. The item D under new business is the resolution regarding the Behavioral Health Consultants Contract, EAP Services for the Police Department, Ms. Lepalas?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution regarding Behavioral Health Consultants LLC Employee Assistance Program Agreement for the Monroe Police Department and move for its adoption. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the Employee Assistance Program Agreement and any associated documents by and between Behavioral Health Consultants LLC for the Monroe Police Department Employee Assistance Program.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Aguilar. Discussion, Mr. Collett?
So again, this is the same agreement we have currently in place with this company for not just the Police Department Employee Assistance Program, but also the town side. This is the police program that is up for consideration this evening. And this is for a two-year period and at the same pricing as we currently have.
Thank you, Mr. Collett, for the discussion, Mr. Mauer?
There's the section for additional cost for certain programming. Have we utilized that programming at all, and if so, do we know approximately how much?
I believe we have, I know that on the town side we have. I would certainly get you that information for a subsequent meeting. But it's, in the event that those are used, they're certainly covered within the budgets of those, in this case, the Police Department or A.D.
And so this hasn't been, it hasn't been an issue with that creating any kind of budgetary?
No, not at all.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I just have a question, a clarification, if you will. On number five, it says, "This agreement may be amended or modified only upon the written consent of VHC and the Monroe Police Department." Is that something that should also include the town council since we'll be amending the contract?
Yeah, I tend to agree that should probably have been the town.
I agree also.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, it should be the, it should be the town.
Where is that again, Ms. Martin?
Number five.
Number five.
Number five, yeah.
Number five, not, okay. So is there a motion to amend paragraph five of the agreement by way of deletion of the Monroe Police Department, replacing that with the Monroe Town Council or Town of Monroe? Would you prefer, Mr. Hayden?
Town of Monroe, could you determine?
Town of Monroe.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer, discussion on the amendment to the motion. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? All right, that motion carries, so there's, the motion is to approve the agreement as amended. Any discussion in that regard? All right, seeing no further discussion, Mr. Mauer?
Actually, we may need, if that is the case, is the counterparty to the agreement also the town of Monroe and not the Monroe Police Department in the first line of that page.
There are motion to further amend the agreement to delete Monroe Police Department on the first line of the-
I know three locations, Mr. Chairman.
One, two-
And then on the bottom, after the signature line.
I see the, there's two in the preparatory provision, one in the first paragraph, and then the signature line is as indicated. So is there a motion to delete reference to Monroe Police Department, replace those additional sections with the town of Monroe?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Martin, second.
Second.
By Mr. Mauer, discussion on the Second Amendment to our, this is a lot of work, this is excellent job. All those in favor? All right, the motion carries eight to zero, so now we have before us the resolution and the agreement as amended, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero, thank you very much for those extra set of eyes. Sets of eyes. Moving on to E, is the resolution regarding the Hilltop Securities Municipal Advisory Agreement. Ms. Lepalas?
I will introduce the following. Resolution regarding the Hilltop Securities Incorporated Municipal Advisory Agreement and move for its adoption. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the municipal advisory agreements and any associated documents by and between Hilltop Securities Incorporated to provide services as a town's municipal advisor for matters related to the issuance of municipal securities.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer, discussion, Mr. Collett?
Thank you, Chairman. So the town has had, and has entered in agreements for each, every time we have a bond issuance with IBIC. And we've had this arrangement for well over a decade. The primary point of contact and advisor that we've used for much of that time is Mr. Bill Lindsay, who is the co-owner of IBIC. He had advised us earlier in the year that IBIC was going to become part of Hilltop Securities. And as such, certainly wanted to continue our relationship, but under the umbrella of Hilltop. I've had meetings with Mr. Lindsay, with our finance director, with Mr. Hayden about that, trying to understand how that relationship would work. One of the primary concerns is ensuring that, you know, we have, there's a significant amount of institutional knowledge that Mr. Lindsay provides. He is highly respected internally, both in our finance department and by the board of finance members who have worked with him over the years, particularly the chairman. Just, you know, the services that are performed are many matters relating to the bond issuance in terms of working with our bond counsel, working on preliminary modeling, working on pricing, preparing the official security statement, which is obviously a very detailed document, and also preparing us and participating in the rating agency calls and that process. So having worked directly with Mr. Lindsay in the last bond issuance, I would say I agree with the sentiments of our finance director and our chairman of board of finance. So Mr. Lindsay has said he would remain our primary contact to provide some further comfort in that regard. We've negotiated in a right to terminate our agreement with Hilltop upon 30 days' notice, with or without cause. So if that should change and we no longer have Mr. Lindsay available to us, that would be our, that would be our ultimate option to exercise if we were no longer comfortable with them. I did bring this to the board of finance as a whole, and they were in conference that we should proceed. And I know Mr. Hayden viewed this, he also found some language relative to expense control and making sure that we have some pre-approval on reversible expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Collett, any further discussion? Mr. Reed?
Just that this was explained in even more detail at L and A, and, you know, we felt in a consensus that this was a really good move.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, any further discussion, Mr. Mauer?
And as the selectman mentioned, this was brought up through the board of finance, and the board of finance was indeed all on board with this.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero, thank you very much. Moving on to F is the resolution regarding Constellation New Energy Inc. Agreement, Ms. Lepalas?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution regarding Constellation New Energy Incorporated Agreement and move for its adoption. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the electricity supply fixed-rate plan agreement and any associated documents by and between Constellation New Energy Incorporated as a town's energy supplier from June 20th, 2022 to June 20th, 2023. And that pursuant to the town's purchasing policy, the first electman is authorized to execute such agreement at any energy price cost per one kilowatt hour that he, in consultation with the town's director of public works and finance, finds to be in the best interest of the town.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second? By Mr. Reed, discussion, Mr. Collett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have the current agreement with Constellation New Energy as our energy supplier through 2023, June of 2023, I'm sorry, through June of '22. And what we're looking to do is extend it through to 2023. We have been working with an aggregator, collaborating with other communities. I've noted in my memo, Bridgeport, Trumbull, Fairfield, Westport, and Weston, to obtain favorable regional pricing. So through our aggregator, they have identified that rates are extremely low right now. We currently have a rate of 7.9 cents per kilowatt hour. They are currently anticipating by the draft agreement, you have to cure a third fixed, a third year added on at a fixed rate of 7.64 cents per kilowatt hour. The reason why I've allowed some, or asked for some flexibility in the resolution is because when they go to strike this, the numbers could certainly change slightly from day to day. But given we seem to have the opportunity now to lock in that third, that extra year, we're being advised that, you know, although it's difficult to predict what things will be like at that point, this would certainly lock something in, there would be some savings that could be counted on in a few budget cycles from now, and it would reduce our exposure to volatility in the markets.
Thank you, Mr. Collett, any further discussion? Mr. Mauer?
Do we purchase a bulk amount of energy, or do we purchase based off of use?
I mean, this would be at a, you know, at the rate of the per kilowatt hour price. Obviously, the aggregator is providing, you know, estimates based upon history. But again, they're aggregating amongst all these communities. I don't think Constellation is looking at, there's nothing here that says we must purchase at least this much.
So if an opportunity were to present itself for us to receive energy from another source, or such as renewable energies or something of the like, we would be able to do that and still keep this for any overage of the, such energies?
My understanding, and I'll defer to the town attorney if he's aware of anything in here that would preclude us. I mean, I think in terms of purchasing electricity through, obviously through ever source, this would be, I mean, we would be locking in as the sole supplier of electricity. But obviously, you know, we're always looking for opportunities for other savings, so that answers your question.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed?
May I, just for my own clarification, may I direct some attention to Mr. Mauer? So if we put solar panels on that, that's what we're going to do?
That's what I'm referring to.
Just wanted to make sure.
Or if, if we put solar panels or wind or whatever the payment be, or if some were built in town that offered it to the town for energy?
I don't think there was anything in there that indicated that. I don't think there was anything in there that.
No, I haven't, nothing.
Any further discussion?
This also passed.
All those in favor? Against, motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to G, it's a two-part, and I'll call for a vote on each contract as we did last time. The first is the resolution regarding the town engineer job description. Ms. LaPallas.
I will introduce the following motion. Revision to inland, which one are we doing? The town engineer?
Engineer, yeah.
Okay, so introduction, revision for the town engineer job and move for its adoption. Resolve that the Town Council hereby approves the proposed revisions to the town engineer job description and authorizes the first electman to implement the revised job description as soon as practical honor after July 1st, 2019.
Motion by Ms. LaPallas is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Reed. For discussion, Mr. Collett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in your packet, you have both a clean version and attract changes version for this. This is consistent with what we've discussed during the budget process. Is that one of the recommendations from the town planner that I'm moving forward is the, having the town engineer position become focused and full-time on town engineering? So this, the modification here does have some housekeeping changes in it and some minor adjustments, but the substantive aspects of this is to remove the inland-wetland functions from this job description as they were migrated to the other position I will be discussing after this. The one comment I will make is make sure the council is aware that the, my understanding, talking with my labor councils, that the supervisors' union is not in support of this change, that they believe it's taking work away from their bargaining unit. However, our, my position through councils is that we are not eliminating any hours, any salary, or any bargaining unit employees.
Thank you, Mr. Collett. Any further discussion? All right, seeing now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to the second job description revision is the inland-wetland coordinator. Ms. LaPallas.
I will introduce the following motion. Revision for the inland-wetland coordinator and move for its adoption. Resolve that the Town Council hereby approves the proposed revisions to the inland-wetlands' coordinated job description and authorizes the first electman to implement the revised job description as soon as practical honor after July 1st, 2019.
Motion by Ms. LaPallas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicella. Again, discussion, Mr. Collett.
Thank you. So the, as I'm sure you anticipated, the subsequent change here is the addition of the inland-wetlands agent role and all the other associated duties for inland-wetlands are added to this existing position. What is maybe not clear in the jobs, the current job description does not have the fact that it is a part-time position currently, so with the addition here, you'll know that this does become a full-time position. Again, that was contemplated in the budget, that was recently adopted, and other than that, there's other, housekeeping, other similar changes made here. The other changes, increasing this from an associate's degree requirement to a bachelor's degree requirement. Other than that, I believe everything else is housekeeping and moving some things around and formal.
Thank you, Mr. Collett. Any discussion? Mr. Formicella.
A brief comment. Mr. Selectman? This will allow a single person to be responsible for the inland-wetlands issues that is reporting to the commission rather than having to split time with town engineer test, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing now, call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. Item H under new business is the donation from Kimball Group and NE Materials to the Sprint from Monroe. Ms. LaPallas.
I make a motion to accept from Kimball Group slash NE Materials to Sprint from Monroe a $3,000 donation, and vote for its acceptance.
Motion by Ms. LaPallas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Discussion, I think is self-explanatory. These are on their agenda to show appreciation to those, publicly to those who make such generous donations, so on behalf of council, our vote is a clear expression of our appreciation. But the floor is open for discussion if anyone wants to say anything. All right, seeing now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. And I, the donation from the Monroe First Foundation for the senior center activities. Ms. LaPallas.
I move to accept donation from Amy Lacheyalma, Director for Senior Center Activities. The Monroe First Foundation conducted the first electman's golf outing to raise funds for various community programs. The foundation has submitted a $2,000 donation to be utilized for senior activities, and vote for this acceptance.
Motion by Ms. LaPallas is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Aguilar. Again, ditto regarding our, reason for this being on the agenda. I will mention that I am an officer and director of the Monroe First Foundation, and I don't believe that my vote is in any way a violation of our ethical procedures and that I have no personal financial interest whatsoever in a Fund of 1C3 charity, but I did think, I just wanted to note that for the record. Any further comment? Yes, Mr. Mauer?
I just want to say, on behalf of the Commission on Aging, who is aware of this, that they also are extremely appreciative of this coming in for the senior center, so the Commission on Aging wanted to express their gratitude.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mauer. Any further discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for a vote. The motion carries eight to zero. We have no unresolved items on the agenda this evening, however, we've got a.
Harris Nursery.
Jane.
Had a Harris, the nursery, it's $3,000, major plant.
We did not.
We made it.
We put it on the.
Went into consent.
It's on the consent agenda.
All right, sorry.
It made me feel like I'm off track here. I was going so smooth there, and you threw me off the tracks at the end.
I was putting it down in my diary, how good you were to me.
Second public participation. Did anybody wish to participate?
They did until then.
Seeing now, I'll close. Second public participation. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. LaPallas. Second by Mr. Mauer. All those in favor? Motion carries eight to zero.